7:02, we're going to call this special meeting on Thursday, October 25th, to order. At this time, I'm going to ask that you please rise for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance, and I certainly would hope you would keep the people in Maine in your thoughts as well as the Israel conflict. Thank you. Thank you. Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and be seated. Roll call.
Kristi Chong, present.
Will Furry, present.
Sally Hunt.
Colin Conklin, present.
Chair Masaro.
LaShaka Moore.
Okay, are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
I do want to note that the printed agenda in the back is incorrect. There is a public comment listed for 3.01. So that printed agenda that the individuals here may have does not include public comments specifically, but public comment is 3.01. So I want to add that. And those are all of the changes or additions.
Okay, so we're going on then to public comment 3.01. Do we have public comment?
Chair Masaro, you do have public comment. Beth Keir on the attorney contract.
Good evening, Board Chair, Superintendent Moore, and Board members. My name is Beth Keir, and I'm a 20-year taxpaying resident of Flagler County. I'm also the legal guardian for Matanzas High School student. During my 37-year career with a national not-for-profit behavioral health organization, I served as National HR Director with a focus on employee relations, risk management, and operations. In this role, I provided guidance and consultation to corporate and field leadership, including the organization's senior leadership. I share this background because I believe it is relevant to my public comment. And I urge the Board to carefully consider what appears to be their desire to terminate the contract of Mrs. Gavin under the guise of just cause. When I was asked by leadership if it was okay to terminate a 17-year employee with a proven track record and consistently satisfactory performance reviews, I would have advised them to proceed with caution, rather an abundance of caution. Additionally, I would want to understand what the specific examples of conduct that led to or supports a just cause termination. And I would further advise that absent failed performance review improvement plan results, this is a high-risk termination, which could result in a claim of wrongful discharge, which could be, in this particular case, I would say, in excess of $500,000 claim, or potentially an EEOC claim. And lastly, it appears to me that it's a desire by some Board members to terminate Ms. Gavin's contract, not based on facts, but rather based on personal agendas. And I, again, caution and wish the Board to consider what the loss of Mrs. Gavin would be to Ms. Moore as she begins her tenure as the new superintendent, because it would be a tremendous amount of loss of institutional knowledge and guidance that would help Ms. Moore acclimate to her new role. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Before we go above that, could you put that screen back for a second? Can those of you in the back read the writing underneath clearly? This is the first time we've actually had that up there with the timer, and this is something we've been talking about. So I think it's really important that it's there, and that seemed to work out well. So you can read that back there? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Moving along. Before we begin item four, Human Resource Services, which is going to discuss the mutual agreement, 4.01, I'm going to take this opportunity to relinquish the gavel. I'm going to give this gavel to Will, Mr. Furry, because in the contract of Ms. Gavin's, it clearly states that the chair is to negotiate. In this case, the Board had elected Mr. Furry to negotiate. So therefore, during this segment, I believe he should serve as chair.
I will not. The vice chair should take that role. That is what she was appointed to.
Not necessary. I can relinquish it to anybody, and I choose you because you did the investigation. You had the conference. I did not.
I will not accept it.
Okay. All right, well, then I will maintain it for that reason. All right, here we go. 401, mutual agreement. Mr. Furry.
Yes. So just to report back on my meeting with Ms. Gavin, I'm just going to read you a statement here that I prepared that highlights the experience. So on Monday, October 23rd, at 10:30 a.m., I met with Attorney Gavin discussing mutual agreement regarding termination or amendment of her employment contract for Flagler Schools. This meeting was unproductive and, quite frankly, a waste of time. As Ms. Gavin has no intention of engaging collaborative conversation, she was combative, condescending, frequently interrupting me, attempting to finish my sentences, and even at one point telling me to stop talking. After an hour and a half of discussion, it became evident that the conversation was going nowhere. As a result, I decided to end the meeting and make it clear that I was dissatisfied with her conduct during the meeting. As I was about to exit her office, Ms. Gavin shifted into apologetic mode. However, by that point, I was no longer willing to invest any more time in attempting to reach mutual agreement. Ms. Gavin continued to talk in circles, displayed manipulative behavior, and attempted to dominate the conversation, preventing us from addressing the intended purpose of the meeting. Her behavior was unprofessional, to say the least. It became evident that Ms. Gavin was only willing to discuss the possibility of transitioning from school board attorney to district attorney. And the only personal takeaway from this meeting, from my perspective, is that if there was any shred of confidence left in Ms. Gavin serving as school board attorney, it was erased as a result of this, her behavior. So that is the outcome of that meeting. There's really not much more to add for mutual termination or mutual amendment. So anything further will have to be collaborative discussion here as a Board with the attorney, because there was nothing more than her just moving into that district attorney position.
Chair Masaro, if I may respond briefly on that.
Absolutely.
I do want to let the Board know that Mr. Furry and I did have the meeting. It started out with him stating to me that he was there to terminate my contract, and that I indicated that I was there to attempt to resolve the matter in a mutual agreement. I then indicated to him that I had discussed with him two and a half weeks ago an option to attempt to sever from being the Board attorney and to shift into a district attorney role, to attempt to protect and preserve the district, assist Ms. Moore, and to also finish out my tenure here in the district. Mr. Furry indicated to me that, and I also notified him that I had spoken to Ms. Moore, and she was amenable to this. He indicated to me that he had not spoken to Ms. Moore, and that he needed to speak to her before he could entertain that type of an idea, and that he once again reiterated that he was there to terminate my contract. And the choices that were given to me was he was either, we were either going to be terminating my contract with an agreement, or I would be terminated without an agreement. Those were my choices that I was provided. I inquired as to the charge of this from the meeting that we attended, as it was my understanding that two Board members had indicated that they did want to go in that direction. Ms. Hunt had indicated that she wanted the contract terminated pursuant to the recommendation, not the findings, but the recommendation of the Schutz Bowen Law Firm, that it would be the salary plus-plus. And Ms. Chung indicated she wanted to know more about retirement, and Mr. Furry indicated that he was also in favor of that model. So I believed that he would be coming to the meeting prepared to discuss that option and have already spoken to Ms. Moore. That did not occur. I continued to ask him, and he indicated that he was charged with terminating my contract, and that was the charge he was given. I asked who gave him that charge, and he indicated to me he was elected to that. I again asked him to please, because I noticed he had taken notes at the meeting, and he indicated that, and I said, could you please tell me what Ms. Masaro's position was, Dr. Conklin? He wasn't able to really produce that, so I reiterated what the two Board members' positions were, again, Ms. Hunt's position and Ms. Chung's position. He then told me he was elected to do this. I will tell you that I did share with him the many different methods and ways that I had provided guidance and assistance to this district, because I believed that it was important for him to know when considering moving into the district attorney role. It was important for him to know all of the various facets of a district attorney job that I had done. I shared with him Kevin Penley's position over in Volusia County, and that I already was performing those duties. As he indicated, we did not have a job description. It was not something he was willing to discuss or even entertain, even though this Board had two members, plus himself, indicating that was the model. I again inquired of, you know, he then said he was there to terminate my contract. I stated that it would be essential for us to have an actuary to know the dollar amounts that we were discussing. He said that was unnecessary. It wasn't needed. I told him if he believed that I was not speaking accurately, he could speak to our HR chief. He didn't want to do that. He told me that he wanted to terminate my agreement and failed to provide me any offer of compensation. He finally offered a compensation, which was, and I will state, a slap in my face for the 17 years of service. He said, I offer you 12 weeks. I stated to Mr. Furry that that was less than what the law firm had even proposed with a mutual agreement. And if this was a mutual agreement, he was not coming to the table in good faith. Things did get very heated, and Mr. Furry told me that I needed to understand that he did not work for me, that I worked for him, and that you all were going to be terminating my contract, one way or the other. So yes, it did become heated. Yes, it did become unbecoming of me. I don't like to raise my voice. I don't like to have confrontation. That is not who I am. But when someone comes unprepared to a meeting and has failed to even do the legwork of giving me a good-faith offer, to even consider walking away from this district, or to discuss how we could turn into, from a Board position to a district position, and he had not even spoken to the superintendent, I didn't feel that that meeting was going to serve a purpose as well. I apologized to Mr. Furry. I did indicate to him that that is not my character, and that is not who I am. I also told him if he believed I was disrespectful, that I again apologized. But I did say to him that this is a contentious matter. This is my livelihood. I am a year and a half away from full retirement. And Mr. Furry's response to that was, you could retire, you could have retired last year. You could retire tomorrow. And I said, I could, but not with full benefits. I have worked for this district, protected this district, ensured that when we needed to do a search for a new superintendent, that I facilitated and assisted this district in finding the best superintendent possible to lead this district in the years that I have served as the Board attorney. But I didn't stop there. I have performed the duties of the district attorney. I have attended ESE meetings. I have provided guidance to the staff, to the principals, to the assistant principals, and I've assisted them in understanding how they can improve so that IEP meetings can go better. And I think that to show how effective that's been, in eight years, the first time this district was exposed to having to be at an administrative hearing on an ESE matter was on September 7th of this year. And I successfully litigated that matter, and I won the hearing. I reminded Mr. Furry of that, and I said, but I provided that in my quarterly report, and I didn't receive a thank you for protecting the district. His response to me was, why would we give you praise for doing your job? Or when you have had district administrators do their job, Ms. Warmick preparing the budget for you, you thanked her for doing that. So to hear, why would I praise you for doing your job, again, that's disrespectful to me. I indicated to him that I've tried to be proactive by attempting to facilitate a movement into the direction with respect to if this Board wanted to hire a Board attorney, by facilitating things like moving into handling risk management and removing that from Mr. Woolleyhan, because in January, he will be asked to have to do not only safety specialist, but he will also be charged with being the threat assessment coordinator. And that is going to be a large position. And so with my insurance background, because I was an insurance attorney for 20 years prior to coming to the district, I felt that I could serve this Board very well by handling the risk management of the liability and the workers' compensation matters. And I have had, over the past two weeks, supervisors contacting me directly with whether or not an employee could come back to work, and assisting them and providing them guidance. Yesterday, I had an employee who's getting ready to have surgery. As a matter of fact, her surgery was today. I provided her guidance on what her status will be and how she will continue to receive income while she is on temporary total disability. I explained to her how, at each step in the progress of her returning back to work, she will provide discharge information to the district. So Board, I shifted into an area that I know very well. I know insurance. I know insurance defense. 20 years I did it. I also notified Mr. Furry that I also reviewed this year's injuries and found that there was a pattern, that we've had several paraprofessionals and teachers who have had injuries that were a result of a bite, and that if Kevlar sleeves weren't being worn, that we needed to ensure that our employees have Kevlar sleeves so that they can be protected while they are working with the students. I shared with him these pieces of information to try and get him to understand that the knowledge that I have, the years of experience that I have had, the assistance that I have provided to the CFO, to the curriculum chief, to the technology chief. Today, we have an issue with Spectrum. I handled that matter. I'm continuing to look into the fraud matter and assist with letters and information that need to be handled, and getting documentation together if we are going to be making claims against our carrier. So I've continued to move forward in spite of all of this noise out here of a potential termination of my contract, because it is my job, and I believe it is important for me to represent this district to the best of my ability and ensure that you are protected, no matter what is being stated about me, no matter what is being alleged. Because I will tell you right now, what I heard the other day is not accurate, and it's important for me to be able to share with you that I stand here as an attorney of over 30 years' experience, fully capable of doing the job of the district attorney or general counsel. To be told, well, we don't have a job description, or you would have to apply for that job, is disingenuous. Because when Superintendent Middlestat decided that she wanted to change our cabinet from being executive directors to chiefs, not only did I rewrite those positions, but their titles changed. Not a single one of those administrators had to apply for their job, even though their job description did change considerably. And it changed because when we originally had those executive director positions, for example, technology, the way we had technology then is very different than how we handle technology now. So it was important to look at the job descriptions and bring them into the 21st century and bring them up to date with what the employees were truly doing, because it is the superintendent's job to evaluate them based on those job descriptions. And if they have an outdated job description, they are not being evaluated appropriately. So that was a part of what I did. So to say we'd have to create a job, no. My current position as the Board attorney is not only just the Board attorney, but I am also the district attorney. I do both of those roles. So it would be carving out what I previously was doing for this Board. And I also told Mr. Furry, I wasn't speaking in circles. I said to him specifically, Mr. Furry, it is clear that this relationship is broken. I don't know why. I don't know what I've done. I'm uncertain as to the relationship being broken, but it is, and I respect that. And I respect that Ms. Hunt believes she needs to have representation. My shifting into being the district attorney does not require guidance to Ms. Chung, to Mr. Furry, to Ms. Hunt, to Ms. Conklin, or to Ms. Masaro. It requires me to provide guidance to the district staff, something that I've been doing for years. It requires me to pick up the phone, like I did this morning, and answer a call regarding a parent who is questioning whether or not the agreement that she has in her divorce, whether or not, how that impacts picking up the children, how that is going to be interpreted, how we are going to handle that. And I worked with the principal on that. I spoke to an attorney who I met through ESE today, who just took on the position of guardian ad litem for Volusia Flagler. He said, I'm looking forward to working with you. We've always collaborated. We've always worked well together in ESE. You have been a breath of fresh air. You have provided the assistance that this district needed in ESE matters, protecting this district, but ensuring that the services that a student was entitled to were provided. So Board, I stand her willing and able and more than capable of being that district attorney. And that's what I would say occurred during that meeting. I did ask Mr. Furry at the end whether he would be meeting with Ms. Moore to discuss whether or not she was amenable. He told me that he didn't need to let me know, and that maybe he would be and maybe he wouldn't. It did end okay. He walked away. I picked up the phone and took the call of an administrator and assisted them. So I continue to do the work as this Board attorney and as the district attorney, because that is my job. Thank you.
Chair Masaro, I'd like to set the record straight on a couple of things that were said.
Prior to that, I would like to just make a comment. It is my recommendation that if the majority of this Board is not amenable to a mutual agreement, that this Board has counsel available in this meeting or in a meeting in order to come to a decision, so that we do not put onto this district any unnecessary financial burden. I am concerned, as I listen to some of the things that have just yet been shared from Ms. Gavin's perspective and from Mr. Furry's perspective, and I think it is extremely important for this decision that this Board does have proper counsel before making a decision that would have a financial impact on this Board, on this district. And that is my recommendation.
Proper counsel, what are we talking about, more attorneys? It's on.
I just think that there have been things that have been shared. I think that as this conversation continues to go, I think that this Board needs to make sure that the questions that you have, that you have counsel that can answer those questions so that you can make a decision. Any other meeting, we have counsel available to this Board, and that is my concern. Again, you don't have to take that worth anything, but that is my concern, just listening to some of the comments that Ms. Gavin is making.
Mr. Furry.
Thank you. So just to address in regards to the comment that I was just there to terminate her contract, when I said that, I was in mutual termination. Whenever I tried to bring back the conversation to why we were there, Ms. Gavin kept guiding it to the point that she thought I was there to make her an offer, right? I was not there to make her an offer, because we had not put together an offer from the Board on how we would go about terminating her contract, amending it. It was a meeting to sit down and have a conversation on how It was a meeting to sit down and have a conversation on how we might mutually terminate it. But it was impossible to get to that conversation, because you would not have it. Moving on, regards to Ms. Moore, you were emphatic in the fact that Ms. Moore supports the idea of you moving into district attorney. And I told you I had spoken to her, and that I didn't get the same response from her. Okay? Apparently, you don't remember that. And so, and you were insistent upon calling her during our meeting, and I felt that would have been inappropriate to put her in that type of a position, right there and then, on that matter. So yes, I did speak to the superintendent before I met with you, okay? And I did speak to her after. Secondly, on the duties of the district attorney, again, it was not for me to sit with you and lay out a plan of what that's going to look like. That is a board collaborative decision. Again, that was taking us away from why I was there. We were never, only two things we were able to actually talk about was the fact of you moving in as district attorney position, and the one time that I was able to get in something, to hopefully have a conversation with you, was on the twelve weeks. And if you were insulted by that, you know, that's a start of a negotiation, right? And if you're going to just draw the line in the sand when somebody puts something forward without responding with an alternative, how can you have a negotiation? So it was just an uneventful meeting, and so tonight, we're just going to have to take it from here. And as far as, you know, the comment about that you don't work for me, and I did say that, because while we were in the middle of our meeting, she put her hand up in my face and said, "Stop." Okay? I'm sorry. That is just totally disrespectful, right? And so, and that was the moment when I was ready to end the meeting, because that's just not acceptable. So, and the manipulative conversations at times, just bringing in the praise. I'm here in a capacity to talk about a termination of your contract, a renegotiation of terms to mutually terminate your contract or amend, and you're seeking praise from me in this meeting. I think that in itself is inappropriate. You're trying to make it sound as if I don't appreciate people's hard work, right? That was not the time or the place to bring that into the conversation. So you're not going to manipulate me when it comes to negotiations or in your public comment either, okay? So that's where I stand with that. I'll give it back to the board, and we'll go from here.
All right. At this point, since you brought it up, I'm going to swing this over to Ms. Moore, because obviously, whatever decision is made this evening is going to greatly impact your district. Now, I'm very happy you're sitting in that chair, but let's face facts, this is a new position for you and a new experience, and there's a lot to learn from this. Legal aspects affect this district every day, every day. And I want to see what your feeling is about the possibility of having a general counsel and let the school board have their own representation. What do you think about that?
Chair, I'm sorry, but I feel like you're putting our superintendent in a bad position to put her on the spot like that.
No, I think we need to, this is her district. I don't care, this is her district.
This is a conversation that needs to happen behind closed doors.
No, no, it is not a conversation. This is a conversation that has to happen in public. This is a public conversation that we must have in front of people.
You and her, you can talk to the superintendent on your own, but I think that this is inappropriate.
Well, I think you're wrong. I'm sorry.
That you're putting her on the spot. Just like he tried to ask her a question, you're doing the same thing.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
From what I'm hearing, Superintendent Moore, when you hire for your district, is that under sunshine?
It's under records request, like people can request information, but I do not hire for individuals the way that you hire for individuals out here in the sunshine.
Because Attorney Gavin was hired by the board, specifically, you know, as part of government sunshine. She is the school board attorney. She was not hired by a superintendent, correct? Okay.
That's correct.
So I guess as I listen to what Christie is saying, what I'm taking from that is, if Superintendent Moore is to make a decision about counsel for her district hiring, that to me is then not part of, aside from the public records request, but that is not in sunshine in the same way as our hiring of a board attorney. So I think what I am hearing is that, that, these are kind of really two separate things, where we are making a decision about Attorney Gavin as a board, the board who hired her, which is separate from whatever Superintendent Moore would decide to do for her, for legal reasons, you know, for whatever legal support she would have. So I guess I'm not seeing where that would be combined.
Okay.
Ms. Hunt, I would like to clarify that actually, when I was outside counsel from 2006 until 2010, I was board attorney. Bill Delbrug was the superintendent at that time, and he had announced that he was leaving the district before his contract expired, and he discussed with the board at that time of bringing me in in-house, because there was going to be a new superintendent. There was also a new ESE director. There was a new Title I director. There were a lot of new positions in the district, and he believed that my experience just from those four and a half years would be very beneficial to the superintendent. It was Janet Valentine that was stepping into that role. And so that's when I shifted from being outside counsel to in-house counsel.
So are you an employee?
Yes, ma'am.
Of, so is, do you report up through Superintendent Moore?
I provide guidance to Ms. Moore when there is no conflict to...
Okay, I'm just trying to keep this really clear.
Sure. If there's not a conflict between the board...
My understanding is that you are the board attorney. You, about a year and a half ago, the previous board voted to renew that contract as the board attorney.
It says board and district, and I serve both the board and superintendent. As long as there's no conflict, I do both.
So I will just say something real quick. I think Superintendent Moore brought up legal counsel. I'm going to respond to that. I believe it is a dereliction of duty that Attorney Gavin, from the beginning, did not recommend, due to conflict of interest, that she not speak to her contract. I think if we had someone acting in a fiduciary manner, that would have been recommended from the beginning, when there was consensus to discuss the attorney contract due to concerns, and when even words like termination came out. I believe it's a dereliction of duty that our attorney didn't say, "Due to a conflict of interest, you are going to need to have outside counsel discuss this." So I am in agreement with you. I think that we should have had outside counsel this whole time.
But what, I mean, we agreed to do that, and that's what we got with Shutz and Bowen. I mean, we did get outside counsel, which I have additional questions about when we get to that, but we went to them for that exact reason.
And I guess, so it's interesting you say that, because we did go to them. I had my conversation with them. They put together a summary that I felt was very clear, and so now, when we come back here, and it's as if that summary doesn't exist, or there's different interpretations of that summary. I think I heard from the two of you during our workshop, you had very different interpretations of mine, right? So Superintendent Moore, and Will, you've said it wonderfully, that, you know, we need to discuss this. I'm certainly open to if we need to have outside counsel in the room when we are discussing this. I'm really open at this point, because I think things are pretty cut and dry, but I'm certainly open to whatever the path forward is. But I will just end with this. What I think to me is very clear is that tonight, we absolutely, it is, it is not our responsibility, we have no weight on who is the district attorney. That is not our decision as a board. We can just decide if we are continuing with Attorney Gavin or terminating Attorney Gavin. That is all my understanding that we can do. We cannot make a decision for Superintendent Moore that she now is hiring Attorney Gavin. And I'll say one other thing, although I know I said I was going to stop. Attorney Gavin, you brought up when the executive board went to the C-suite. Again, those were employees of the district, so...
And I am an employee of the district, ma'am.
But you are hired, again, and this is perhaps where we need to have, you know, counsel in the room with us, because I don't see it that way. I get a paycheck from Flagler County Schools. I get a pay, it's on my pay stub. I am technically paid, but I am absolutely not the same as a Flagler Schools employee.
Ms. Hunt, I...
But you are an employee.
You are an employee.
Ms. Hunt, I actually do have a lane in the payroll. I have a lane, just like all of the other administrators have. I have a lane of where I start, zero to whatever the steps are, I am a district employee. And I do want to say, when you said it was a dereliction of duty, when I sat up there the day that we were in the workshop, and you stated you were offended, well, I don't think you said offended, but you said you were concerned that I was going to be there to provide you guidance on my contract, and I stated, "I didn't know that's the purpose of it, because I didn't know why you were having that workshop." Mr. Furry even indicated the same thing. He was unclear as to the purpose. I said, "I'm not here to provide you guidance on my contract." I was very specific about that, and you cautioned me that I should not be providing you guidance. So to say I was derelict in my duty, at that meeting, I said, "I recommend that you go and hire outside counsel."
And listen, I would be happy to review the videos, because we maybe just have different memories of how that went down. But I've talked long enough, I will...
I'd like to make a suggestion, just so we can try to get somewhere. And this is along the lines of what I would motion, since it appears there is a majority that we want to terminate this contract, that we set a date so that there can be a discussion if she wants to become the district attorney and how that transition could happen.
Okay. And here's where my head is. I am trying to compromise here, seriously. It's obvious that three of you want to terminate the school board attorney. Two of us do not, all right? And before I get into even more logistics, why, I think that it would be imperative, if we want, the school board wants to get a new outside attorney, I think we can do that. But I also think we can salvage and not cost the district a tremendous amount of money by utilizing the services of Ms. Gavin's now in the capacity of general counsel. Now, to do that, though, I was under the assumption, Will, that you were going in to work an agreement, not for termination, singly termination, that was a possibility, but also to have the conversation about, would you consider being a general counsel? Because nobody had had that conversation. And I thought that was part of it, and I don't think that got achieved.
Well, that was evident before I even walked into that room, that that was a desire, and that was the problem, is that we could never get off that part of it, because there are some of the board members that did not necessarily have that view. So I wanted to talk about what were other options that she may consider, because in this scenario, you know, this was not an earlier retirement offer, right? This was, we were focusing on the termination part of her clause, right? So I was there to find out what she would be amicable to, to come to a mutual agreement. Monetarily, all should have been on the table, but it could never get past that one area. So I think that that was clear, that that was her desire, but there was nothing that this board tasked me with offering the attorney in this meeting, other than having a discussion to see how he might come to a mutual agreement.
Right. And that's what I would have, if I were in those shoes, that's what I would have done. If we weren't going to get an agreement financially, which is what you were looking at first, then what would we be mutually agreeable upon? And in that case, it would have been moving on to the possibility of having a general counsel. How would that work? That's the kind of things I was hoping would have resulted from the conversation. And, you know, when I look at the figures that are possible here, it's astounding to me. It scares me tremendously, because this financial situation we have here now in this district, losing $700,000 doesn't help, okay? Now, going into the possibility, if you proceed with termination without cause, which it's going to end up that way, if we go that route, that can cost us easily additionally $500,000.
That's not true.
It is.
No, it's not.
Who advised you of that?
You got the memo that was sent out to you today from Ms. Wormack. Okay. When you look at the memo, the twenty, this is the value right now of Ms. Gavin's contract, how much Ms. Gavin's contract is worth. The 2324, her contract, its salaries and benefits, sick time, remaining hours, her hourly rate, okay? For 22, 2324, it comes out to $208,882.56. You go to the 2425, which is the following year to her, end of her contract. Her contract ends at the end, June 30th of '25. So it's an additional, it'll actually be an additional eight months, a year and eight months, is what she has left. You go through all that, and you can see the vacation hours, sick hours, these things all get counted in with an actuary. That's how they figure out how much a contract is worth. And that comes to $342,675, because there's raises, and you've got your cost of living, and everything goes in there, and that's with all our policies in place. So looking there alone, you're looking at over $500,000. Now, you have to look at the figures. I'm not making these up.
Getting paid a salary to leave.
It doesn't matter. No, it doesn't work like that. Because we have a legally binding document called a contract.
Right, and the most it says she can be paid is twelve weeks.
No. If you have just cause.
I have been advised by counsel that I have just cause. Now, you can disagree with that, but I have counsel that has stated I have just cause.
Well, that's funny, because I spoke to counsel about your just cause, and they said, "You're absolutely crazy."
Okay.
So we both have counsel.
So if we need to have, to Superintendent Moore's point, if we need to have someone in the room, so it's not, "Hey, when I talked to this person, they said this. When I talked to this person, they said this." We need to get this resolved. I will also say, for what Christie just said, I have also been advised that the contract is very clear, that should, after I'm advised that I have cause, if this is escalated to the, I forget, ALJ...
Bla Judge, yeah.
Oh, I don't think that's the route.
That at most, it would be a twelve weeks payout.
I'm going to refer to Shutz, okay? If the school board does not believe that it has a just cause but still wants to terminate the employment agreement, then the language of the employment agreement itself seems to state that the maximum that Ms. Gavin should be paid is twelve weeks of the base salary, without benefits, plus her accrued sick and annual leave. In short, this amount of twelve weeks of base salary plus accrued sick and annual leave appears to be the maximum amount that will need to be paid to Ms. Gavin in order to conclude the school board's relationship with her.
Appears.
And can I...
Well, look, the reason why they use those, I'm sorry.
Just real quick. Just real quick. Just real quick, just real quick. Um, another thing I was advised on, because, and again, this is just what, I'm just gonna share with everybody, what has been told to me. What I was advised on is because Attorney Gavin wrote her own contract, that any judge or the ALJ is going to lean more toward the side of the board, because the language within the contract was written by Attorney Gavin herself. So if the language is squishy, or whatever, it is going to be deemed not in her favor as she was the one who wrote her own contract.
And I, you know what, Sally, I don't disagree with you there, but here's the problem with that. This is a contract that has been in place for 17 years. You have longevity and a number of school board members who have signed off and agreed on that contract, and you have history, which puts the board then on the opposite side again. That's the problem. It's, if this was like a two-year contract even, maybe even three, relatively new, that would be a good argument. But with 17 years of historical value, don't stand a chance.
Well, also, there is, uh, state statutes that limit some severance pay as well, up to 20 weeks, that was there. Our contract says 12, right? The, the reason why the, the, the legal opinion may have some of the words that Dr. Conklin said, is because outside of the contract, Ms. Gavin can sue us for anything, for any, any amount, any reason, um, irregardless of what her contract says. Whether she can prove it and she can win it, that's another question, right? But it's, this opinion is, is, is very clear on the remedies that there are if just cause is given. And it, it clearly states that person that determines what that just cause is, is the administrative law judge. That is the remedy for Ms. Gavin, if she believes that that just cause is not correct. And if ultimately, the, the administrative law judge agrees with her, then she would be entitled to 12 weeks of pay, plus some other benefits, right? Um, so, and some of those numbers that you mentioned in that accounting are things that she would be paid out irregardless of whether it was now, or whether it was at the end of her contract, because there are certain things like sick pay and the, the leave and the, and the vacation, that would, she was gonna get those anyways, regardless of timing. So, um, and, and, uh, so, it, to, to reach those level of numbers that you're proposing, it would, it would take a civil action to get there, based on what I've read from the legal counsel that we've already paid for. And we already have, uh, a clear picture of what that looks from a legal professional, and a, and a very prestigious firm at that.
Dr. Conklin.
Okay, so I just wanna go back to a few, few things. First of all, when you enter into negotiations, the goal is a win-win for both parties. Whatever was discussed, it certainly doesn't sound like there was any win-win there at all.
There was nothing discussed. We, we really got nowhere.
No, but, but, Will, I mean, the whole purpose of going into negotiations is to come out with a win-win. And it sounds like there was nothing offered other than termination. That's not a win-win. That, at the end of the meeting, you asked for parameters. I very clearly gave parameters of what I was interested in you discussing and negotiating. Everybody shared a little. Sally was very clear, she was only interested in the 12 weeks, um, of, of paid leave and a general release of any liability. Um, Christie was curious and interested in finding out more about the retirement and what the impacts of that would be. And Cheryl was interested in the recommendation of looking at the possibility of Christie being district counsel and getting her own school board part-time attorney. That, that was not discussed.
Absolutely was discussed. That was the hope, that was the reason why we couldn't get beyond that, because all that Ms. Gavin would accept in the conversation is that she would be moved into that seat. That was it. And there was nothing else to talk about. We couldn't, we, I couldn't get a word in edgewise in, in most cases. I finally was able to say, how about 12 weeks? Because she said, you didn't even offer me anything. And I said, how about 12 weeks? And you said, I'd be crazy to take that, something along those lines.
As she would be.
Right? Well, that's, a, a, again.
That's her contract.
That's what her contract says, so I don't, I don't really understand why.
Board, can, can I. Board, if I could say one thing. Can I just, no, Christie, just let me finish, please. Um, first of all, you, I would highly recommend, before we have this discussion again, that every person sitting up here, take out the contract and read Section C, 6C for themselves, where it is discussed about the 12 weeks of pay. Just a couple of questions to back up. Will, at the end of that meeting, you stated that you, one of the things that we were disappointed about is we had a list of questions, and we wanted that input from that attorney. Much of it was about civil law and being sued. We have yet to get the answers to any of those questions. Did you spend time with the attorney, with Schutz's office, to get the answer to those questions?
Yes, I did.
And where are the answers to the questions?
You haven't asked for them. We, we were talking about other things. Would you like me to take this time now and, and, and give you that information?
Will, if you got the answers to the questions, why wouldn't you just share them with the board?
We, we, we're, we're in the middle of this meeting.
No, 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 no. At the last meeting, you said you were going to meet with the attorney, you were going to ask the questions, and you would get that information to us.
They, I feel, they should have included that in their, um.
You had.
I agree, that, that was the reason why.
To ask, well, here's, here's.
Did you meet with the attorney?
They were very simplistic questions.
Will, did you meet with the attorney and ask them specific questions that we gave you?
Will, can you share that information? And I, I just wanna say.
I'll share it now.
I just wanna say real quick, Will, I want you to know how much I appreciate you doing this on behalf of the board. Um, so thank, my thanks to you, and if you could share any additional information, I would appreciate it.
The question, the, the, the main question that came out of the, the last meeting was about the retirement, right?
It wasn't the main question, Will.
Well, let, let me just get, you've asked me for information, I'd like to give it to you, Dr. Conklin.
Please, do.
Okay, yes, so, you had, there was a question about the, um, the retirement, because it was brought up that, oh, we will have to, um, pay her out as if she retired in, at the end of her contract, and could we be liable for that? The attorney said to me that there's nothing in her contract that points to that, and there's nothing that they could see that would require us to continue on her, um, her, her retirement payments beyond the time of her employment. Uh, they're not tied in, they're not tied into the contract, right? Now, what, what, the, the problem with some of the questions are, they all point back to civil. They're only, they're only referring to what they see in the contract. And so they're pointing me back to what they, what they wrote there. So all these items are open to say, yes, can she sue us for these things? You, in a civil matter, you can sue for anything. So there's no way to quantify, can we get sued if we, if we terminate this contract, right? If we terminate with cause, there, it is clearly laid out there, they spelled it out in their opinion, it's spelled out well in the contract. So beyond what, that's all we tasked the attorneys to do, or what they could respond to, is respond to what was in writing, because there's no way to know how, uh, what, how a civil action might go. If she goes a different direction, rather than going to the administrative law judge, that would be on her as an individual.
No, but I guess, I guess the questions were asked, the, the written questions we all provided to you to share with them, that was, should have been part of this, so we would have had that information.
Oh, well, I, that was sent to them, they, they feel that they, they covered them based on what, that was sent to them by, um.
Lorraine.
Yeah, Lorraine sent them to them. They, they felt that, that those were addressed in there, they could answer the questions that, that, in the summary there, and in the, and in the detail, based on what is in the contract, right? Because if some of them were vague questions and saying like, can we get sued? Well, yes, we can. So, I mean, that, that, you, you, you just can't get a legal opinion on that. They, they were tasked with.
Was, if we get sued, what is the likelihood we have a case, right? So we don't incur the liability or the cost of that. That was the question.
Right.
Given what we are saying, we know that the only way is that, that through the contract, that she can be terminated, is for just cause, dereliction of duty, failure to report to work, misconduct in office, violation of criminal law. And as of now, we've got no evidence, so the question for the attorney was, if we don't have any of those specifics, what is the likelihood we would win if taken to civil court? Those were the, those were the roots of the questions.
But first of all, those questions, uh, you can't, that's, that's not a, a reasonable question to ask. I mean, for example, I mean, how are they gonna know exactly how the, the, the outcome of that case might be? They've given us the termination procedure based on the contract that was there. They reviewed the contract that we provided them, and the answers that, that were given back were based on that. So, all I'm saying is, I'm not an attorney. I found this attorney, they've responded to us, they've given us, they had those questions, they felt that, that their responses covered all of that. Each board member has had time with them, and they still had access to time. You, there was no limitation on board interaction with the attorney.
Nobody said that.
Right.
But we charged you to go back to the attorney.
No, but those questions.
But you also had an opportunity to ask those questions yourself.
Right, but we have a right to get those questions answered.
Right, but I submit, they were submitted to them, so if they were, if you didn't get, that would be on you. If you didn't feel that the answers, we've had this document for quite some time now. If you felt like you could have gotten, um, needed more answers, you could, you could have contacted them yourself.
Will, at the end of the meeting, you were elected to do that, to find the answers to the additional questions.
No, but those initial questions, you're referring.
You were directed to have that conversation. Yes, I did.
And for how long?
About probably 40 minutes.
Okay, so you had an opportunity to ask them as well.
But I assumed, when I spoke to them, that Will already had, as part of this discussion.
That should have been included in there.
I did.
Right, that it would have been included.
It was sent in writing, it's, we have the email, if you want the email, that receipt, it, it was sent to the attorneys, so.
Okay, so, that's fine, we can look at the, the email that was sent to the attorneys. In the review that the attorneys themselves did of the contract, they very clearly say, if the school board attempts to terminate the employment agreement by any other method, it could possibly face a breach of contract claim from Ms. Gavin. Other than that, the only way you can terminate the contract is just cause. They are very clear in here that you have to, you, you cannot just say you have just cause. You have to publicly articulate your reasons set forth in writing, including factual support for each reason.
So to move forward.
That is in their document.
So if I need to put, so please tell me, if I need to put into writing.
Yes.
Um, it, so, for us to move forward, I would be happy to put into writing the multiple things that were confirmed to me by legal counsel.
Yes.
That would fall under misconduct, dereliction of duty, so if that is, um.
Well, the, the writing is, is, is a formality. It needs to be in writing, because that's the way that the, the chair will deliver this to.
No, no.
Yes, it is.
Given, look.
You can, you can verbally state your cause.
This is from your attorney's mouth, not mine.
Right.
If the school board determines to pursue a just cause termination, it should base such a decision on articulated reasons set forth in writing, including factual support for each reason. That is, that's their words, not mine.
Factual.
Right. What she, what she, she, she can do, and, um, but I'm saying that if, if one was to make a motion and, and on, on, for just cause, this would just be a, a follow-up document that would needed to be, uh, presented. Because it's not the board that's gonna determine the, the, um, whether the just cause is just cause. It will be, um.
That's right.
It will be up to Ms. Gavin to accept it, or to, uh, to appeal it.
Right, and we saw how that went. So, again, going back to finding a win-win here, we, if, if I can't, um, let me try this a different way. Looking at the financial state of our district right now, looking at what we just lost, the 700 that we're working to recoup, looking at where we are going to be losing the dollars for Ezra, Es- Ezra.
Ezra.
Next year, we're looking at significant decrease in funding next year. This contract, if we go to a civil suit, and if it is won by Ms. Gavin, $342,000 is just the contract. The contract, the benefits, the retirement, the sick leave, that's accrued, the vacation accrued.
That's the 20.
That was what was emailed to you.
Colin, that's the 24, 25 contract, that doesn't count the 23, 24.
No, I, I know. So yes, it would be those two numbers together. But the, but the more disturbing, I, I think, in fairness, is you have a 17-year employee who is a year and a half from retirement, and if terminated at this point, without anything that so far none of us have heard clearly what just, just cause is, there is going to be a hit of $836 a month from her retirement, a month, from the, from what she would be paid at full retirement. I don't think that's fair. How is that possibly fair? So, and how long does, does a judge consider that? Like, do they count that for 10 years? Do they count it for the average lifespan of a woman? I don't know about you, but I'm not comfortable with gambling with that kind of money.
But that, but that's, that's preposterous, that we would be to carry on in perpetuity, uh, deposits into her retirement.
Not you, Will. It's what she would have earned if she retired at full.
I think that is a weak argument, because she.
Well.
Yes, because, because, think about it for a minute. If somebody quits or terminates their, is terminated, right, they could, are still a, will, able to be employed somewhere else.
Will, you, if you're gonna terminate somebody, right, you better have crystal clear just cause. And maybe Sally does. So once it's in writing, then we can have that discussion. But I am telling you, we are putting this district in financial jeopardy.
Sure.
If we are not crystal clear on that, because if, if it goes to civil court, those are the, those were not by Christie. This was from HR and from finance.
Those are just totals. Has any attorney advised you of, of the likelihood of that?
Very possible.
If, if her contract is breached.
There's state statute that says that she can't exceed 20 weeks in severance.
No.
Yes.
Civil. It's not severance. That is not severance.
Well, civil.
There's a difference.
Again, we're, we're, I think we're, I don't know that we're gonna go anywhere in, in this arena, because we're, we're, we both have two different views of what the outcomes may be.
I think you're playing with fire. I would recommend you follow what Ms. Moore said, you get another attorney in the room to provide us guidance, because you are, we, we're playing with fire, and it's not a small amount of money that we're talking about.
We're gonna get another attorney to tell us what we've already been told, basically.
Well, what I'm hearing Sally say is Sally would like some guidance from an attorney.
I, I, Dr. Conklin, with all respect, I, um, I want us to get somewhere with this conversation. I am willing to listen, but I'm not asking for it. I'm ready to call the question. I'm ready to terminate the contract. So, but, because I am a board member with, with colleagues up here, I am open, especially with our superintendent saying, I recommend further legal counsel, I am open to where we go from here. If Will would like to call the question, I'm ready to vote. If we decide that we want a second meeting, where we have outside counsel present, I'm open to that. I'm really quite open. What I'm not open to is me sitting here, telling you the, the misconduct that, uh, and I have not certainly shared everything, but as I share, I am being attacked, that my, my understanding of the law is inaccurate. So I just want a path forward at this point. Whatever that path forward is, I'm not gonna make that decision, I can't alone. I'm, I am looking for somebody to go beyond the discussion and us discuss next steps.
Ms. Moore, is it in the, and it's just a simple yes or no, is it in the best interest of the district that. of the district that Ms. Gavin at least continue in the role as district counsel?
I don't think that's fair to ask the superintendent.
No, I think it's critical.
This is not her decision.
Excuse me.
It's critical and you don't have a floor.
It's a critical component.
Let me, let me, let me say this.
Let.
Let me say this. I'm going to go back to what I said. The longer we have this back and forth discussion, the more and more I highly suggest that there is an attorney that can provide to the board guidance. I understand that guidance have, has already been provided. It is obvious that there is not a, a clear understanding from everyone on what that's, that says. So that is what I want to say. I, I think it's super important, going back to what Ms. Hunt has brought up, is that we get an attorney that can provide to this board guidance. This is what I will say. If it is in the best interest of this district for us to, if you guys as a board, you are amenable to a discussion around a, a switch over, I am open to that conversation, but I want to negotiate the terms of that. I am not open to just saying, okay, everything just flips over. It is, I should have an opportunity, just like every other employee that we hire, in order to have a conversation around that. So I don't, I think it would be inappropriate for me just to say, as you have already said, we're just going to flop it all over to the side. If we want to have the conversation, we can have the conversation, but I want an attorney for this district and I think there needs to be a representative from this board there with an attorney present as well, so that we can come to a mutual agreement around what that looks like. But I don't want to just flop it all over. I don't think that is the best, in the best interest of this district, just to flop over because we are crossing lines around what is the board's responsibility and what is my responsibility.
I think, I think that's more than fair.
That's fair. And I also, along with that though, if we're going to have an attorney, Ms. Hunt, you need to put your just cause in writing, so then they can actually interpret that correctly. Because we've just been hearing things, so we don't know, you know, put it in writing. Get, get all your, your facts down in writing, so we all know what we're looking at. That we all know if we do. If you have just cause, trust me, I'll support you. I will support this board if they have just cause. But you have to have facts, not just hearsay. Okay? It's got to be factual and supported.
And I will say, and my, this will be the last thing that I say. My comments are purely in the, the financial interests of this district, purely in the financial interests of this district. It is, yes, and it's no offense to Ms. Gavin, but I am very concerned financially what the outcome of this decision could be.
And I, I just want to state, because you took that opportunity, every decision I make from this seat is in the spirit of Flagler Forward and a functional district. I believe Christie Gavin is a part of the dysfunction of this district. That is my opinion, based on conversations, observations, feedback from key community members. If I need to put everything in writing, I will.
You have to.
And I will. I will tell you, the mistake that I made with the superintendent vote was that it is not in my nature to discredit and disparage people, especially in public. That is not in my nature. And so there was a lot that I did not say during the, the last superintendent vote and the renewal of that contract. So I will step outside of my nature and I will write everything down. With that being, I don't, I don't think, again, it's a different interpretation. With that being said, at our former workshop, I believe Will stated that our next board meeting is all the way November 28th. I'm not comfortable waiting that long. I don't know if we need to do a special meeting the same day as our next workshop.
I don't know that you need to have it in writing to bring a motion forward to, to, to determine the will of the board. The, the writing, you're, you're in writing, if, if you're resolute that you have cause, you can bring it forward. We can, we can second it and have conversation on that. And then, and then it's a formality that it has to be in, in writing to execute it. That's my understanding of that.
So let me understand something. You just heard the superintendent say that in the best interest of this district, she would like to negotiate something with Christie to possibly.
She didn't say that she was looking to negotiate. She'd like to be part of the process to see what that position looked like and what the roles are. We, this is our, this is our duty.
Will, can I finish?
She gets to finish. You can't stop, you can stop interrupting.
Fair enough.
So you just heard the superintendent, in an effort to try to create a win-win, so we are not looking at any kind of financial jeopardy, to work with Christie and possibly the board chair to come up with a plan, whether that is district counsel and we have our own school board counsel. So you get what you want. You don't have Christie Gavin as the school board attorney and the district continues to get what they need to move forward.
Vice Chair, Vice Chair, I wanted to make one clarification. Ms. Moore was saying that she would like also to have an attorney in the room. Did I not understand that?
Yes.
And so it would be a meeting with, if it's Shuts and Bowen, the attorney from Shuts and Bowen, a board member, Ms. Moore and myself in the room. And Mr. Furry, I do want to make sure this board is aware that I did discuss with you terms of attempting to extract myself from the board. I said, I would never want this board to be left bare and that I understand that you may have to do an RFQ, an RFP to find your next board attorney and that I would be willing to serve at the pleasure of the board if you wanted me to continue during that period or if you wanted me to see whether an interim board attorney could be secured, I would work towards that as well. I then said how many days and, and when would the one contract end and the other contract would begin. So I did try and have that conversation with him. So I do want to make sure the board's aware that it wasn't just.
Understand.
Un, worthless.
I guess at this point, I'm just saying to Sally's point, to move forward.
I, I think we need to set some dates. That's just how I feel.
And Board, I know you all are aware, I'm leaving Friday. I'm, I'm not going to be back until the board meeting in November. I mean, we're, we're not talking about.
If you had to choose, because I, I, I am not in favor of waiting to the 28th. So we can either call the question tonight or we would have a special meeting that you would just not be in attendance for.
Well, I think it's really, I think it's actually really pretty unprofessional to wait, that you just won't wait, what, a week? You have Thanksgiving in the middle.
It's a month.
No, it's not.
The 28th of November?
We have a business meet, we have a workshop and we have a business meeting. You're talking about, what, three weeks?
When are you coming back?
28th?
Right, right around Thanksgiving.
I mean, I, I, you know, this meeting was for the, hopefully to come to a conclusion. If we can't, then, you know.
I thought this meeting was about hearing what Will was able to negotiate.
And they weren't able to do that.
Everything was on the table. It wasn't just for that. But after that meeting, I, I have no confidence in, in Ms. Gavin moving forward and I do not support her moving into the district position after my meeting with her. So that's just my opinion and so I, I'm not working toward that from my district two-seat anymore. It's just not.
You know.
Not only my decision, but that's where I stand.
And, and that's fine and we're all entitled to that. As I said at the previous meeting, and I will say that again, that there is so much knowledge, a wealth of knowledge that has carried this district very well for seventeen years and has kept us out of a lot of trouble. At our last meeting, at our last meeting that we had, that important meeting where we had to sign off on the buses, on that money, actually to get that, that percentage, which was an excellent percentage for that large amount of money, it wasn't posted. It hadn't been posted. And thank God that Christie checks things and got it posted because we wouldn't have been able to have voted that and we would have lost that percentage. That saved us a lot of money, right there, right then and there. You know, you keep saying it's her job. Yeah, it's her job, but there's a lot of other parts of her job too. And, you know, you guys, excuse me, as board members, you have just decided you don't like her and that's all it is. That's what it comes down to. The circumstances have led us here because I started off great.
What circumstances?
I've started off great with, with Ms. Gavin.
Yes, and what circumstances? Because the ones that you mentioned are invalid.
I mentioned them in the last meeting. I'm not going to sit here and reiterate everything.
Okay, well, this is not a hospital. It is not run as a private institution. We are a public service.
Okay.
We have taxpayers' money. So yes, attorneys have to speak to the media. It's part of their job.
Not about us.
Flagler County Attorney does.
How is that protecting us to talk about board members to the media? That should not be part of her job at all.
And she doesn't.
That's not, she says she's protecting us. That's not protecting us.
That's not protect, you're right, and she doesn't. She just gives the facts when they're requested by public records. Every attorney is required to do that.
Be able to go to our attorney in confidence and I cannot do that.
Ms. Chung, I did not violate confidence. I, Ms. Hunt and I have never had a conversation about whether she is selling her house or not. I did not betray a confidence.
Now it's never, you told me differently.
No ma'am, I didn't.
Attorney Gavin, when Cheryl Massaro asked you which board member was upset about the press conference, that was a moment where it was not appropriate for you to share which board member. And let me give you, let me give you an example of how others know better. Our CFO was also asked by the board chair, which board member asked for certain financials. And our CFO does a great job when any one board member asks for certain information. She emails, she emails the information to all of the board members. That protects the, that protects any board member, so that if there's a public records request, it doesn't see like who asked for it. Everything is under sunshine, absolutely, but there is some level, especially because of, we are under, you know, we are under the spotlight and we as board members have to have conversations with our CFO, with our attorney, that are not then just public information. There, I cannot talk to Will. I cannot talk to Christie. I cannot talk to Cheryl or Colleen outside of sunshine. But I can, to do my job on behalf of this community, I can and I need to have conversations and confidence without the fear of some manipulated story that's put out there. And so we're just at a point where we are obviously not going to agree on what maybe constitutes, I think Cheryl, at one point you said, if there was misconduct, she would be brought out in handcuffs.
Pretty much.
That's, that is not my interpretation of the statute of, of what misconduct is about, right? So we're just not going to see eye to eye on, on this language.
I agree.
I have been advised now by two different attorneys, actually three different attorneys, that all of these questions that I have, that I am legally sound. So I, as one voting board member, I feel very confident in whatever decision I make tonight, I feel like I am doing what is in the best district, interest of the district. And before, I don't want to forget to say this, because I cannot talk to Will outside of sunshine, I do want you to know that the conversation you had with Attorney Gavin, I have received information from community leaders who have had that same, where Attorney Gavin has been wildly, wildly inappropriate, that her conduct was incredibly combative. I'm not going to repeat here tonight, things that I have been told she said. I have not personally experienced that behavior, but I have heard stories from others of that behavior. And so I want you to know, because I can't talk to you outside of sunshine, that as you are sitting here being observed by the community and being told that you were not fair, I want again to say, I thank you for, for doing this on behalf of the board and thank you for sharing your side of, of the events.
And Ms. Hunt, because I can't talk outside of this deus to you, I would just really sincerely hope that the attorneys that you're listening to are not attorneys that this district has had to literally go to battle with for the best interest of this district. Because that is pretty.
We hired, we hired the Shuts Law Firm and that is who has given me counsel.
Okay. Because that is very concerning. So I'm glad to hear it was Shuts.
Chair Massaro. Chair Massaro, if I may, just briefly respond. Ms. Hunt, when you told me you were very upset with Ms. Massaro going outside of that script from the press briefing, I shared with you and asked you whether you were okay. You, you were not wanting to censure her anymore, but you were also not okay with her not complying with our procedure manual. And I asked you whether it would be okay to have a conversation with Ms. Massaro regarding the procedure manual and what it means to be the board chair and that when you are speaking on behalf of the board, you are only to speak on behalf of the board. You were in agreement with that and I contacted Ms. Massaro. I called you after my conversation with Ms. Massaro to let you know that she indicated to me she had a right to speak from her heart.
Could all of that have been done without using my name? Could all of, everything that you're just saying, if I said absolutely, I think Cheryl could use, I'm not going to rehash this.
I'm not going to say it couldn't.
But everything, but everything you're saying absolutely could have been done.
I'm not saying it could not have.
A woman who has, a woman who has continued to discredit and disparage me over and over, said incorrect things that now I exist, right? I know you read these articles, so everything that you just said, Attorney Gavin, could have been done without using my name. It adds to the dysfunction? There is a reason why we are making national headlines. There's a reason that we just lost 710,000 or whatever it is. There are reasons that, that these things are happening. It is because of dysfunction.
Is that what this is about? Is this about articles in the newspaper about you?
No ma'am.
Is that what this is about?
Dr. Conklin.
I mean, you just said that.
Dr. Conklin.
But that is what you just said.
Dr. Conklin.
So if it's not, please clear it up.
The thing is, I think that a lot of the conversation tonight is wanting things to be very black and white. Attorney Gavin can be an incredibly hard worker. She can have done many great things for this district and still overall be unfit for the role. It is not black and white. I can bring up the relationship with a local blogger and that is one of many things. It is the same thing with the superintendent, with Superintendent Middlestat's vote. There were a number of things. I observe, I have conversations, I take it all in. There are many people who impress me across this district and there are many people who concern me because I am taking it all in. So no, this is not about my name being written in an article. That ship has sailed. This is about Flagler Forward and minimizing the dysfunction that is keeping us from being in a school district and not having our students being charged with battery and felonies. There are a lot of great things here and there are a lot of challenges. And every thing that I bring up or any vote that I make, it is in the spirit of, I love La Chaka's Flagler Forward, that is my focus. This is not about me at all. This is about the district and the health of the district.
And I, I would just agree with that. When, when we talk about articles, every time these things are written, it, it does not put us in a good light. And every county has their. And every county has their faults. We're not the only ones. There's fights going on in other counties. All these things are happening across our state and probably the nation. But some of this just has to come to an end. So, I, I mean, if we all want to work together, I don't know. Whatever, if you want to go with Superintendent Moore's, um, suggestion, or I'll call, we can call the question too.
Well, once again, my concern is not only just financial, but legal support to this district. I don't care about the community when it comes to legal. I care about our kids and their families. It's as simple as that. And as long as our district leaders are getting the support that they need and have wanted and it's accurate and it's keeping us where we need to be, that's important to me. We have a brand new administrator leading this district that will have no support at all. People you bring in here will be cold and not know the culture of Flagler County. That's huge, absolutely huge. You may laugh at that, Mr. Furry, but it's very, and I don't want to hear you, I'm talking.
Well, you, you mentioned my name.
No, no, because you're smiling and smirking. That's why.
Well, I'm smiling because Ms. Moore, how long have you been in part of this district?
Seventeen years.
Seventeen years, right.
Seventeen years. And you're telling me that, that she doesn't have institutional nodds, that she doesn't have a team to support her?
No, she does not legally. She does not.
Legally?
Legally, she does not. She does not.
Well, of course not legally.
All good superintendents need support from law.
There is, there are, there are-
Counsel.
There are, Ms. Gavin is not the only attorney in this state that can handle our legal needs.
You're right, but she's the only one that knows Flagler County schools, only one. We were fortunate that when we lost Ms. Middlestat, that we had Ms. Moore who had been here. Yes, she's green, but she's going to learn and it's going to take years for her to really fit into her space. But there's legal issues every day, pending legal situations right now for this district.
To move this conversation forward, sorry Christine.
Go ahead.
I, I was just going to kind of piggyback on what you said. To move this conversation forward, can we at least get consensus to let Ms. Moore, Ms. Gavin, Shuts come to the table with a board member, I say chair because that's appropriate, and negotiate what might be a win-win for everyone to move forward? Can we at least get that on the table as a consensus?
As long as her not moving into the district attorney position, that is the only way I will give support. I will in no way support, uh, her as, as a, as an outcome here, that Ms. Gavin is going to, as a, as a, as a term for mutual termination, that she would move in to the district seat. I will not support that under any circumstance. Anything beyond that, I will, I will, uh, say let's, let's work to out how we can best terminate this relationship.
I, I don't think it's our decision to, but yeah, along with what Will is saying, um, everything except that, that would be up to Ms. Moore, the rest.
So, is there consent, is there consensus? Are you saying you would support allowing Ms. Moore-
Yeah.
-to negotiate, discuss that with Ms. Gavin and the chair and Shuts as our own legal counsel?
That's not what I heard. What I heard is that, that they would want to negotiate a financial settlement.
No, that's what Will wants. Will does not want, Will is non-negotiable on Christie moving in. What I'm asking Ms. Chung is if she is willing to allow LaShaka to negotiate with Christie with the counsel for the, the school board.
I'm willing to allow that, but I would like that for, uh, this contract to end our relationship within 60 days.
Okay, so the conversation is to negotiate and then look at an ultimate, if there is no agreement, then look at an ultimate ending of the contract in 60 days.
Correct.
That's fair. I can, I like, I can agree to that. Although I, again, I'm going back to say that we really need to have Ms. Hunt's just cause in writing.
If we're going to terminate her, we do.
We just have to have it. We don't know, it's, we'd have to know what we're talking about because we really don't.
That's, that's if the negotiation doesn't work out and the termination comes.
Right. All right, that's fair.
I want to be, I want to make sure I have clear direction. Because I, I did not hear a motion and all of that. My direction is myself as a representation of this district and the chair, along with intern, attorneys to represent both the district and the board, will meet with Ms. Gavin in order to determine some type of mutual agreement. Is that what my direction is? Because I'm hearing different things. I hear clearly, Mr. Furry says, if the, if the motion was to negotiate Ms. Gavin becoming the district attorney, his vote is no.
Right.
So, I, that, I, we need, I need clear direction of what is the purpose of this conversation? If the, if the purpose of the conversation is not for us to consider Ms. Gavin as the district's attorney, then what point, the district doesn't really need to be a part of that conversation.
No, that's the motion, is that, I mean, at least, that was my understanding.
Yes.
Yeah. That would be, the conversation would be for consideration of Ms. Gavin for, you said you didn't want it to just flip. You wanted to negotiate what that would look like.
Can, can I just get a clear motion with-
I'd like to make the motion that Ms., um, Ms. Moore will sit down with Ms. Gavin, Chair Massaro, and a representative from Shuts Firm to discuss the possibility of moving Ms. Gavin into a district attorney role. If there is no agreement, then we would move forward with looking at 60 days.
I just don't know if we can word it like that. I mean, can we motion something like that?
What do you, if you, you want to modify it?
It's like, it's like we're saying, okay, you, you know, I just want to make sure we word this correctly.
I, I think the, the important thing to realize that if we go down this road, if you vote for this, for a, uh, some version of this motion, you have to be, um, amicable with the, with one of the outcomes in a amendment or, uh, or modification that Ms. Gavin could potentially be the district attorney, uh, in the end. Because that, that, that's basically what this is all, all about, is to find a way to have her get that role.
And I'm hearing Christie say-
But that's going to be up to Mrs. Moore. We can't say this is what's happening.
Right, but you have to remember that we're, i- it's going to be tied to the, to our contract.
I mean, Will, she may want that.
And I, that's fine. I, I, but I'm just want to make sure everybody understands that we have two elements here. We have a contract that exists for her as the board attorney and we have a new role. So, they, so when you, when you, when you tie them together, right, then, um, and I, it's clear, and again, Ms. Gavin can change her mind, that is the only outcome that in her mind she sees fit. So, all I'm saying to the board is, if we go down this road, that is something that will, could potentially happen, right? Because that, that is, the, the goal of this meeting is to ultimately seat Ms. Gavin in this position. That, that's, that's why it's being done, so.
Well, let's think of it two ways. Again, a win-win. We have the majority of the board who does not want Ms. Gavin to continue as representation. We have district that may be interested because of what is she is currently in the middle of, her experience and her background, to continue as district counsel is what the conversation would be. She's not your counsel, she would remain as the district's counsel. I understand you're not in favor of that. I get that. But that is basically what the motion is. If that is not agreed, and, I mean, the fix to what you just pointed out is a simple modification to a job description. We do those all the time. That's not a big deal at all. But if they can't get to, yeah, if we can't get to an agreement, what I'm hearing Christie say is that then in 60 days, there would be consideration of ending the contract.
Within 60 days, yes.
Bob, are you available for a quick, quick question? I don't know if you're the right person to ask, um, and, and, and my fellow board members, I just, it's something that I, I'd like clarification on. To me, it seems possible that if there is consensus among this board, that we do not want Christie Gavin as our attorney. It seems clean to me that there be a vote and we terminate that contract. From an HR perspective, should Superintendent Moore want to then hire Christie Gavin as a district attorney? Would that be seamless? Would there be something that would interrupt, like, um, uh, think vacation time, sick time? Um, would, be, if, you know, do we have a period of two weeks or if someone is terminated from one role, uh, so long as they're, um, still considered rehireable and they get another job, do you honor, um, I, I hope you know what I'm asking. Do we have a period where we could just terminate tonight and then it would be up to Superintendent Moore on what she would like to do with the district?
Let me, um, say something before Bob answers that question, um, because I think that goes back to what Mr. Furry is saying for, for clarification in the motion. A part of termination, the conversation we would be having is to terminate her contract over as the board attorney and then look at what that would look like for her to come over to be the district's attorney and what the terms of that would be.
Two different contracts?
So, a part of this contract, there, there, she is not a, she is not supervised by me currently, so she does not have a contract with me, um, currently. So, it, the mo, the, the question really is, is this board amenable to, as a conversation of termination of Ms. Gavin as the board's attorney, that that be conducted in a conversation that will allow her to serve as the district's attorney? And I agree with Mr. Furry, um, and what he stated, that your yes vote has to be that you, you understand that the means of your termination of your contract would be that we would consider pulling her over onto the district's side as the district's attorney. So, Mr., um, I want to just clarify that, that Mr. Furry is absolutely correct in that, what he was clarifying.
I would just, I would want to know, one, if Bob has any insight into what I just asked, and two, if there would be a grace period where Superintendent Moore, I would want you to have all of the information available to you. Because I don't know, um, as CEO, I don't know what all you are considering right now, if you're considering things like liability, risk, um, so is there a grace period where, again, legal counsel, I write up my concerns around misconduct, dereliction of duty, do, you know, would that be beneficial to you in your making your decision on extending a contract, um, for the district?
I, my assumption is that at the conclusion of this meeting, that Attorney Gavin will want to have some conver, will say, have a conversation with me that would require what you're saying to go through, um, some form of investigation.
So, can you lay out, if we leave and go home today, can you just maybe put simply what next steps would look like?
Next steps, if, depending on what the motion is, um, if the motion is that we table this discussion, then we will leave and go home and, um, we will still need to address the concerns that you have brought forward. Um, if the motion is termination of her contract tonight, um, we still would need to address the, um, items that you have brought forward. If the motion is for, um, as a portion of this, uh, contract, that we look at a mutual agreement that would allow for Ms. Gavin to become an employee of essentially the superintendent on the district side, then at the conclusion of this, if it is a favorable vote, vote by this board, then we will begin having conversation with Ms. Gavin around the terms of that, um, in order to determine if we can come to an agreement on what those terms would look like.
So, Colleen, can you-
I'm writing, I'm trying to-
Word that again and include mutual agreement.
Wait, do Sally, you want an answer, correct?
I, I would like to still know from Bob, um-
Stand in here, Bob.
Again, if someone does not have job A anymore with the district and two weeks later, there was a new job that opened up and they now have job B, is there a grace period that they still get to hold on to, um, their tenure and all that goes with it?
Well, uh, quite honestly, I, I think the questions you're asking right now, all of you guys speak to, and if you look at other boards and my past experience with boards and having sat in the back of daisies for years and years, that's where at this point you guys would turn to the outside counsel, your board attorney, and they would answer those questions for you. I think you're, you're kind of operating, um, in the dark for not having an attorney on retainer to deal with this issue. And the reason I say that is because at that point, with each one of these things, it wouldn't be, um, one person's interpretation up toward the other. They would then refer to the attorney they have on retainer and that person then guides you all to walk through that. I'm not an attorney, but I do know that state statute says you hire all of us. Superintendent only makes recommendations. You guys are the ultimate employers of all of us, okay? Ms. Gavin's be, sits in a very unusual role that doesn't happen in many districts, where she's an outside counsel, but at the same time, she is part of the organizational chart in that she is an employee of the district. So, as such, when we look at things like just cause and due process, you have to follow regular order procedures. So, if you believe there's just cause, you have to prove it to yourselves. In other words, you'll have to put it in writing. There have to be an investigation either in-house or out. At that point, that investigation would be presented. If you agree, just like statement of charges, when I presented those, um, in board meetings, that's what you would have basically. And at that point, you'd feel that you were comfortable with cause. If termination happens for cause, it can go through a process to a magistrate or a mediator. But you've done that in good faith. Where you run into possible legal issues, and I would say consult an outside counsel on this, is if you terminate for cause without due process. At that point, you run into the possibility of wrongful termination. And then you have the opportunity to be set up for outside, uh, litigation. So, that's just-
So, Bob, can you answer the question that I originally asked? Because I, I missed it in your response.
Yes. Can I restate the question for Bob? Can I restate the question?
Please.
Based on my understanding, when an individual is terminated from the district, is there, um, do they have, is their salary, their benefits and all of those things stopped immediately or do they carry over for a period of time?
No. Let me, let me try to do a little bit better. If, um, the board sunsets a job description, they, um, this job in HR, eh, we've decided to discontinue it and that means that someone is losing their job. And they've lost their job, but two weeks later, a new position within the district has opened up, they apply and they're hired. Do they start at zero or is there a grace period?
There's not a grace period, but you don't start at zero. So, for example, if a, um, a teacher separates and then returns, they would return to the step they left at.
That's, that, thank you. That, that is my question. Do they return at the step, but also do they hold on to things like vacation time, sick time? But also, do they hold on to things like vacation time, sick time? Does that stay intact from when they left the district?
Particular rules on vacation time and sick time is technically when you leave, you're given the opportunity to cash it or bank it. So they could cash out their time at a percentage or they could bank it for a possibility of transfer to another district or...
Coming back.
For folks that come back, they could get it back.
Okay. So, and just curious, so if we did terminate Attorney Gavin's contract tonight, she could cash out or bank her accrued sick time, vacation time? She could bank that with the potential of coming back in a different capacity within the district?
Anybody who separates has that opportunity to either cash or bank.
Okay. That's, thank you, I appreciate you coming up.
I have an additional question. What happens to retirement? Because retirement would then stop at the point of termination.
Retirement stops. But if you're re-employed, you, I mean, once again, you start that clock, but there's a gap now.
Yeah, there's a gap. What happens, that gap is considerable?
Well, it just extends your time out until you qualify. So in other words, you know, if I have a six-month gap of non-employment, then I have to work another six months to either become fully vested or retired.
So if I have a two-week gap in employment,
Okay, I got you.
I would then have to go on two weeks.
Okay, I got you.
And just for clarification, in the district, when we terminate someone, we either terminate them for cause? And then if there is cause, we investigate that cause?
We have to, we have to show evidence of the cause.
Due process.
Due process.
Okay.
I have a question. In those circumstances, though, Ms. Gavin's contract has very clear remedies. If she feels that we don't have just cause as for her to go to administrative law judge, that is the remedy specifically spelled out in her contract. So therefore, wouldn't that take a priority over the procedure that you just said? Because it's not really, it's not the purview of the district to determine, it is the school board that decides that. And therefore, the remedy is, that's why the remedy was put there, so there was one more place to go. And that, in this case, is DOA.
Yes. The only caveat to all that is it's quasi-judicial. So what happens is they have all the different pieces that they would have in the under-hearing where you have discovery. And each group would have the opportunity to provide the judge with evidence that proves their just cause or their lack of.
But the procedures you just mentioned that would happen for a typical district employee, right? With a for-cause dismissal. This would take precedence over that, based on her contract, correct? Because the district is not determining whether or not there was cause. In her contract, it says the administrative law judge must do that.
Mr. Furry, if I may, just for clarification, on a regular employee, when a regular employee is issued charges and dismissed, their remedy is to go to a DOA hearing if they don't believe that they were discharged appropriately. So they also get to take that route. It's the same route. So I just wanted to clarify that. It's not a jump over of, you know, because you're still issuing for cause in, when we're discharging our regular employees.
Right, but it's my understanding that that is for district employees that are being relieved of duty within the district. In this scenario here, it is the school board that is bringing the cause. So therefore, it wouldn't go through that process because we're recommending that, we're bringing that forward as just cause and making a motion and a vote on that, on what to do. Then the remedy in the contract says that DOA is the next stop.
Or breach of contract, civil suit.
But you have to first...
No, you don't.
Well, civil suit, again, civil suit can happen. It can happen under every circumstances.
No, Will, but that's what we're trying to avoid.
But if we have cause, then they, then that's moot, right? So again, we're not, no one has said on this board yet that we were, that we would terminate without cause. It's always been that we would terminate with cause. So, but none of, that is not for...
I read it differently, but go ahead. Go ahead. I mean, I already read it. It says that you can end it without just cause, so.
May I just please, I just think what Bob said was really insightful. Superintendent Moore, let me ask you this. My understanding is, you know, Dr. Conklin brought up she's leaving for Ireland soon. We are a school board. We have to operate under sunshine. That means when we convene, it has to be publicly noticed. There's a lot, there's a lot that goes into the board coming together. You do not have those same restrictions. Based on what Bob just said, I don't understand why we tonight can, just because we have sought outside counsel, I feel like we have, this has been in process now for quite a long time. If we just do a clean termination this evening, if that vote happens, because Bob said that everything can be banked, you then can have whatever time you need to make a decision for what you are describing. It doesn't sound like there is loss beyond maybe a week or two of a gap that does not seem out of the question. To me, it seems very clean to call for the vote tonight of termination, which would still allow you to hire Attorney Gavin, if that is your wish, for the district. I'm not understanding why that's...
Sally, would you allow for the 60 days so that we don't jeopardize the district further?
As in, a motion being made to terminate?
Yes, to end the contract.
That the contract ends on a date that is 60 days from today? Absolutely.
Well, let me add something to that.
First of all, there is a motion that is on the table.
I didn't realize that there was an actual motion that had been seconded.
We're trying to modify it.
A motion. Let's go back to that.
Okay. So Christie, let me see if this works. Motion to allow for Superintendent Moore to negotiate and come to mutual agreement with Ms. Gavin to act as district counsel. If an agreement cannot be reached, termination then will be 60 days.
I would agree with that.
You say December 31st?
Yeah, that's about when.
Yeah, I think that's about right, and that would be the time.
So is there a second, then?
I'll second it.
Call the question.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. You want to read it again? Because...
Do I have to? Motion to allow for Superintendent Moore to negotiate and come to mutual agreement with Ms. Gavin to act as district counsel. If an agreement cannot be reached, termination within 60 days.
I'd like to make an amendment to that.
Speak your piece.
You can, there's a motion on the floor.
And there's a second.
And there's a second, and I call the question.
But we didn't have discussion. The second brings discussion.
You can.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, so what I would, how I would, I would suggest that as what, to what Sally had said earlier about, you know, if we decided to go the route of terminating the contract and then allowing this process to come out through a discussion for the role, I could support that we would keep Ms. Gavin on as outside counsel for 60 days at an hourly rate. Rather than, so she would be terminated as an employee. She could, that would, we could, for transitional reasons, because she can provide help with transition. And if in that 60 days, a agreement is made by Ms. Moore that she would like to hire her as the district attorney, then I could support that. But basically, what would happen?
I don't even know what you just said.
Okay, well, I'll repeat it again. So if we were to terminate her contract tonight...
What is your amendment, specifically? What's the amendment that you're motioning?
I'm going to withdraw amendment, and I'm just going to be in discussion. I, so we're in discussion now. What I'm saying is, before this vote is made, consider this other option, right? Because if you agree with what I have to say, this motion can fail and we can make another one. But if you agree with Ms. Conklin's motion, then we will go forward with that on a vote. But as Ms. Hunt, to speak to what she just said, and Mr. Olet had verified, is that when it comes to her benefits and retirement and those things, they just get kind of placed on hold. So if she was terminated tonight with cause, then Ms. Moore could have that conversation with her. I would be amicable to keep her as outside counsel for all the needs of the district in the interim at an hourly rate that we can agree on. So she still is going to support the district. She'll still have connection that way. And that will give that 60-day time for this position to be thought through on what it should look like. And if Ms. Gavin is the best fit for the position in the view of Superintendent Moore.
So Will, there's a couple of things. If Superintendent Moore is going to hire Christie as district counsel, that wage won't be decided. It's not like we're part of that negotiation. It'll be recommended by Superintendent Moore. That is part of what the motion is.
But that has nothing to do with what I just said. What I said was, is that if we moved for termination tonight, that would remove her as a school board attorney.
Okay.
Then, but I would be willing to hire her as outside counsel, if she was willing, and pay her an hourly rate, just like we do with other attorneys right now. And so we would still use her institutional knowledge for the next up to 60 days. And in that time, then if Superintendent Moore feels that Ms. Gavin is the right fit for that position, then she will make that decision. She will negotiate what her pay is directly without us involved. Because I just don't see why, I don't think it's fair to the superintendent for us to be involved
We're not.
And dictating terms because it's tied to the exit of another contract.
We would not be dictating terms.
But we have to be, we're still connected.
I'm sorry. I just want to keep things as clean as possible. And I do think it was stated pretty plainly, so.
I will just ask, it has been stated, certainly by me, that I do not have confidence in our board attorney. So I guess my question is this, that I would want to have as part of this discussion. Whatever is the will of the board, obviously, I support. But I have been without an attorney and I will continue to be without a board attorney because I do not have confidence. So I would just like to add, as part of this discussion, during this 60-day interim, can we as a board?
Begin to look for outside counsel.
Begin to look for outside counsel? Because at the end of the day, I, as a board member, need sound, trustworthy legal counsel.
Yeah, that's reasonable. I mean, I think that we would need to do that. But, go ahead.
I just wanted to let you know, in knowing that this relationship appeared to be broke, I had already asked our purchasing director, Ms. Calera, to begin looking for RFPs or RFQs for the board to consider and bring forward. She was able to find one, although it's a little bit old. And it also has a contract with it with respect to an outside attorney. That, and she's continuing to search for that. Again, because I did recognize that and I believed that the sooner that you all would be able to have a scope of service and be able to put out to bid an RFP or an RFQ that would be to your best interest. So I'd already requested her to do that. I just wanted to let you know that.
And let me, Chair, can we call the question? I'm sorry.
I just want, before the question is called, you know, if the direction is for me to have this conversation with Attorney Gavin, I do want to just bring back what Mr. Olet stated, is that I make recommendations to this board. And so this would come back if we separate, you know, if it terminates tonight, this would come back before the board. If the board is truly not interested and not amenable to that, you know, don't place me in a position that I'm going to bring back before you an agreement that you're not open to. You know, and I think, I think we got to be just upfront, you know, with that. If you're not, because it's going to come back before you regardless. And so if you're not open to it, open to Ms. Gavin potentially becoming the district's attorney for a period of time, then I think we have to make sure that that is at the forefront of our mind because it will come back before this board again.
Then I would...
And I thought, I thought Christie, with the seconding, that you knew that could be a possibility.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we're talking about 18 months. First of all, we're talking about 18 months, too. I mean, that is a good transition time period to find a school board attorney. Hopefully, that'll meet everybody's needs. Yet the district's not losing hopefully support if we can come to some agreement.
And point of clarification, we are not just talking about 18 months. We're talking about the ability for me to sit with Attorney Gavin and come up with an agreement that may be up to 18 months. It may not be 18 months.
It could be a new contract.
That's correct, but it's at least 18 months, yes.
The only thing else that I would add is I, to your point, Superintendent Moore, if this comes back to the board, because I am always open and I want to do what's in the best interest of the district, I still would ask that perhaps, excuse me, perhaps at our next workshop, that we do have outside legal counsel sit with us so that everything, that will give me time to prepare a statement. Because that will weigh in on my decision on whether I would vote in favor of that. Because if I feel there has been misconduct, dereliction of duty, how could I possibly support that person in that role? So Chair Masaro, what would that look like of, within that time period, us having that outside counsel to sit with us?
I guess it would first be if they were available because we would go back to Shuts, would make sense, and Bo. And they had asked me, I had spoken to them, and they had asked me if we needed further representation. So my guess is, the one particular person, shh, I forget his name, not New and Bound, the other one, is, yes, he is an employee, he's an employee attorney. So that's a plus. He understands employment. So I would contact him to see if he's available. That's the key.
Would it be okay, either in person? I've got to stop doing that. Either in person or virtually?
Yeah, I will talk to him both for our workshop on the 7th, was it 17th? November, no.
7th?
7th, 7th, November 7th, for November 7th. That would be our next workshop. Information, yeah, the workshop in the afternoon. So I can try to get that pinned down.
Chair Masario, I'd like to call the question.
All right, the question, we have a motion on the floor, we have a second.
I need one more clarification. I just want to make sure that in this conversation that LaShaka has, that that Ms. Gavin is not fit for the role, as her opinion is also an option. It's not that she's being tasked with giving her a term. It is for her to decide whether or not this is a good fit for her and what those terms would look like. I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
And we're going to need the cause, which Sally has already said she will put together.
No, Ms. Moore will not need cause.
She won't, we will.
That's what I'm saying.
We do not need cause to end this contract within 60 days.
Yes, we need, we need to have that written.
Can we call the question?
Call the question, all those in favor of the motion.
Wait, state it again, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Motion to allow for Superintendent Moore to negotiate and come to mutual agreement with Ms. Gavin to act as district counsel. If an agreement cannot be made or cannot be reached, termination within 60 days.
I agree with that.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, so it's a 4-1. We're good. All right, that will end that session. We will go on now to public comment. Is there any additional public... public comment. Is there any additional public comment? We do have one. Come on, you don't have to sign up. Come on up. We know you. Come on up.
Thank you, board, for hearing me. My name's Trevor Tucker, in case you don't know me. So I will say this was a very awkward thing right here. Part of it is, traditionally, a superintendent says, "Hey, I need this employee." And then you get a job description, then you vote on a job description, which is the board's responsibility, and then it goes to, okay. So this, what you've done right here is kind of mixing operationals and your board duties. It's no longer very clear, because you're saying, "Hey, you need to do this." It also puts your superintendent in a very awkward position to go, "Hey, she does want institutional knowledge, but at the same time, you guys have put her there, period." Okay, which I feel is very, very awkward, and very not good for your board to put that on your superintendent. Thus, the process of this is very awkward and strange. It would have been much cleaner to have done something, or not done something. But like, all this in between is just very strange. 60 days, because you still have to create a job description. Has to be advertised 30 days. I don't think, like, RFP and RFQs have to go out for 30 days. I don't think you're going to get another board attorney between now and 60 days. I don't know how you guys are going to do that. You guys need to have an emergency meeting pretty quick to get that stuff going. Because that's in your policies, that's in the board policies. So, please, guys, read those policies. Get them good, get them, know them, because what you guys did tonight, I think you're going to put the district in jeopardy. Not because you may or may not have an attorney, because you may not follow your own policies. You might not get someone in 60 days. So good luck. It's just so disheartening to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I see none. We'll go to closing comments. Ms. Chong?
I don't have any right now.
No comments tonight.
No comment.
Ms. Conklin?
The only thing I'm going to share with the general public is I did a little research on local areas, well, not just, yes, basically, local areas, on the cost of litigation teams. In Flagler County, that's the county itself, they spend, they're budgeted for $913,590. Okay, almost a million bucks. City of Palm Coast uses, they spend $685,254 on illegal representation. Going down, that's the closest, but not going down, to Volusia Schools. They have an outside counsel that they pay $290,000 budgeted for, that was last year, so, yep, $290,000 they spent. And they have $400,000 for general counsel, for a total of $690,000 for representation. And St. John's, which is north of us, they do everything outside. They have no inside counsel. And they spend, they put in their budget $447,705. Both school districts are much larger than ours, for sure. Okay, so that definitely has an impact in costs. We spend here, in Flagler, for outside legal counsel, we allot $121,330. Now, for our board attorney, who makes $134,971, and then we also have a paralegal, all right, who's making $79,000, that's with benefits, we spend a total of $388,348, considerably less. So we want to make an effort, through all this change, to try to keep our budget within the parameters that are necessary, so we can put our money where it needs to be, and that's with our staff and our students. So that is my closing statement. I'd like to thank everybody for this evening. Ms. Moore?
I have nothing.
All right, hearing nothing, I am going to adjourn this